Here.
Here.
Make it easy. Approval of Lynch.
No, we haven't. It shouldn't open.
Where we're gonna have the public address in the board first. Tom? We're gonna let you present your guess now.
All right. Would you want to wait until he is seated? My name is Tommy Roberts. I'm a chairman of the University of Missouri Extension Council for Douglas County, and our regional director has given a wonderful opportunity for Douglas County, and here to explain that opportunity is Randy Weedmeyer. They don't call it county program director anymore. It's county engagement specialist, CES, and he's here to explain he's over Douglas County and Ozark County now, and he's here to explain the proposal that our regional director in Springfield has offered Douglas County.
Thank you, folks. We haven't had a full-time agricultural specialist in the ABA office for a long, long time. I try to spend one day a week here, and that's about, I think I do that most of the time I'm here, but I think if you can remember back when we had the MSU intern here, I just got scrolling reports on him, and people could call up anytime and they could get ahold of a specialist to answer questions at any time that they needed, and that hasn't been the case for quite some time now. Our intern went to the dark side of the networks for the Army Corps of Engineers. But Jay Chisholm, our regional director, has given us a kind of a rare opportunity to have an extension educator permanently in the ABA office. He's offered to pay half the salary. Between the city and the county, they can come up with the other half. And this person would be a state employee, and so they'd have access to all the state benefit package that would go along with that. So it would be a fairly secure position, and they would be in the ABA office every day of the week. This would be the second one. Mr. Chisholm has hired one in Texas County in Houston, and I have met with him several times, and very outstanding young man in that position. He's already initiated several programs in Texas County, and there's been kind of a drought there, too, and is very aggressive at promoting extension programs for the people in agriculture in Texas County, and we'd sure like to see that happen here. I might mention that we just interviewed for an extension educator down in Gainesville. We had three candidates. One of the candidates didn't show up, and the other two candidates were both extremely qualified for that position. It was very difficult to make the decision. We offered the position to a young lady from the Gainesville area, but there was another lady who applied for that position that is extremely qualified for this ag educator position. She has a bachelor's degree in agronomy and worked for Monsanto for three years, and she doesn't live very far from here. So we basically already have the good candidate possibility in that regard. I just really like, being a resident of Douglas County, I'd really like to see a permanent agricultural specialist in the ABA office, if we can do that. And from what I understand, we're asking for $5,000 from the city, $5,000 from the county, and of course then Jay Chisholm will supply the rest of the wages and the benefit package that goes with that.
The total package is 20.
What's 20?
Yeah. And this really is a part-time?
It is not part-time.
It's not part-time?
It's a full-time position. They would be in this office every day of the week.
For $20,000 here.
And the benefit package.
Well, the benefit packages are big, so...
Yeah. Well, it is, and that's part of the problem, you know, we have with some of our extension employees is that they don't have access to the state benefit package, and it's pretty in disadvantage for them.
Randy, Tommy had been here, Tom had been here before, so we knew a little bit about it in advance. We'll need to discuss that and run it by everybody. Of course, that's got to be a vote if we decide to do that.
Sure, sure.
Have we addressed the county yet on this?
We have not. We will present our budget with the county, is it the second week in Jan-? Second week in January.
Okay.
Now, if any of you have connections with the county, we'd be likely to apply that pressure.
The 50% cost on this, is this a dedicated cost, or is it, you know, possibly you pay half the salary for a year or two and then decide that funding to dry up?
That's hard to tell. You know, I guess I've worked for the government my whole life, and there's no way to...
So it may be one year, and it may be 10, you don't know?
I really can't answer that, honestly.
Excuse me, is this something that we'll need to address on a yearly basis?
Yes.
Years, I'm assuming?
Yeah. From what I understand, these are going to be fairly secure positions with some fairly good hard funding on the state side behind it, yeah.
And understand that this is a state position and not a University of Missouri position.
Okay.
The University of Missouri position would have been a much higher salary.
Okay.
This is an ag educator.
And when would this begin? Did you say that? When would the position begin?
As soon as possible, yeah.
Same thing that shows up.
That's what determines when we can start the process, yeah.
So this is being in addition to what the city and the county are providing?
In addition to the 10 we already helped the county with. Well, we will address it. I'll Peggy or one of us will let Tom, let the Extension Council know. Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate your service.
And I hope you make your meeting in the big city of Gainesville all right.
I'm a native of Montana. I'll make it there in 15 minutes.
Peggy and I talked about it, and we've got a place in Reggie's budget where we can canvass on to it, since he didn't buy a car. So I think Peggy and I both recommend that we probably go ahead and propose to do that, dependent upon what the county does. If the county doesn't do it, then we won't.
Do you know what the county is doing now? I can't remember. I know they did, but...
10.
10. That's what they're required by Missouri state statute to do.
Yeah. We're both doing 10.
I got a question. Is there some statute, he said this is a state position. Well, if it's a state position, why do they need money? I didn't, I mean, I worked with the state, and we didn't go to anybody to get a fund. I mean, I don't understand. I don't understand why they're asking for money when they say this is a state. State, state.
Tom?
Yeah?
He's got a question for you.
Yeah, maybe you can answer it. You said it's a state position, but why isn't the state paying it? I mean, we have lots of state employees.
I'm not sure how the University of Missouri work that, but I guess I'll just have to say I don't know.
Well, it's just very strange that someone with a state position would go asking for local money. I mean, either the state has the money for the position or they don't. I mean, and then you get cut. I mean, I'm in state, and I'm a state employee. I'm just saying what I know.
Is it a state position or Missouri State University?
No, it's not the university.
It's not a university position, but I don't know what their involvement is to get, for them to say that it is a state position.
Yeah, well, I'm just asking.
I don't understand it. I'm sorry.
Well, maybe they okayed it based on just a lot of this amount of money, and if you can come up with the rest of it, you can do it.
I've never heard of that, though.
But it's through our regional director in the MU in Springfield, so I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
That was gonna be my question. The 50% funding on that is coming from the university?
Yes.
Okay, which would be just...
That was my understanding.
Now, the university used to fully fund this program, isn't that correct, this extension program, and then they gradually drawn or eliminated funding for that program, and then that's the reason for the county and the city stepping up to fund what the university is not funding anymore?
Universities' funds have been cut drastically this year, and I, but I don't know, I don't know that pull with the state. I'm sorry, I don't know that. I didn't get that information from our regional director.
Funding a program, but it's not a university program?
Yeah, that was just my question. That was the reason I asked about this dedicated funding. I mean, they've just been cutting every year, and now they came up with $5,000 more. So I just have to ask that question. If we fund that, get an employee in there, then, you know, I guess we just have to wait until next year to see if they decide to fund it two years or just one.
It just seems strange.
Let me see. You're not gonna meet again until the second week in January. Let me see if I can get an answer from our regional director, and I will share that with the, I'll bring it into the mayor ahead of time, and then we'll be back at the meeting in January.
Yeah, that's what I would like to know, is if they're gonna be able to commit to that funding for a while, or if they just had surplus funds and they funded for one year.
Appreciate that.
I will get the answer for you, and I will be back at the January meeting.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Well, you got here in time.
Just squeaking by. I apologize.
No, you're up.
All right. I don't know why, but you must have had 500 people headed south to Ava today. I've never seen that kind of traffic before. You make it? Want me to do this?
I need to be a member.
Sure. Okay, well, everybody gets one of each piece. Make sure I have one of those as well. Yes, I do. Huh? Third hole?
Take one of these also.
One of each letter.
You pass it. I thought that I worried.
Okay. Mine have to share some. Okay.
You need one more.
All right. Everyone should remember who I am. I'm Jennifer Schatz with QPM CPA. So I'm the independent auditor. So I, a lot of familiar faces here, with the exception of this gentleman on the end. I don't recognize you.
That's all right.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
I'm here to present. The audit report is very informal, so if you guys have any questions at any time, please feel free to ask. I'm gonna go a little bit out of order this time. I usually go over the audit report and the financial statements, and then the management letter points, but I'm actually gonna do the audit report and then the management letter points, and then I'll be able to emphasize what I'm talking about in the management letter point to jump back into the financial statements. So we'll begin with your bound book, and it will be on page four. This is the independent auditor's report. In this, we are giving the city of Ava as of June 30, 2018, an unmodified or clean opinion. This is the best opinion you can receive, and what it means is that we believe the financial statements are clearly presented. This is consistent with prior years, so good job. I haven't had to give you guys a modified or qualified opinion ever, so I'm very happy for that. So thank you. Okay, so we're going to skip over to the management letter points, which is the separate letter that has number one on it. The first one is our internal control. These are, let me back up a little bit. These are our recommendations. As we've done the audit, these are just things that we have noted and that we would like to bring to your attention. This is not anything other than that. These are our recommendations based on our audits, and we've done audits of other cities, and this is what we've come across when we've audited the city. The first one is just your internal controls, and that as the city evolves and changes, and you have new personnel coming in here, we strongly suggest that you go through your internal controls, because you may have employees that have been here for a very long time, and as we like to say, trust is not a control. So when you have a new employee come in, you cannot trust that that employee will always do the same thing that your old employee did. So we ask that you look through all of the internal controls and make sure that everything is still appropriate for the procedures that you have in place with the new employees. Does that make sense? Okay. The second one, there are some new pronouncements. GASB, which is what you guys follow, is the governmental accounting standards for number 83 and 87. 83 is an asset retirement obligation. We call these ARROs, and it's just gonna depend, it'll change the way depreciation is done on certain assets. Peggy loves depreciation, so I'm sure she's super psyched about this one. I don't know that it'll change other than, as we have examples in here, as, for example, electric poles, sewage treatment plants, x-ray machines, and storage tanks. Those are kind of things. So as they are, as this comes into play, December 31, 2019, we'll look at that as it gets closer and see what it is going to affect. 87 is a big one for us. It's big for, we're heavy on the governmental side as far as audits go, and this is going to affect almost every single one of my clients. This is now putting all operating and capital leases on the balance sheet, not just capital leases. And it's also going to stay in the pre, in the past, we've had to go through a process of elimination to figure out if it's a capital asset or if it's an operating, or a capital lease versus an operating lease. Capital lease, meaning that you're going to buy it at the end. You'll have a bargain option to buy it, and then you will have it and retain it. That's a capital lease. Operating lease is like your copiers, or like if you have, if you're leasing at the airport, any of those hangars, you know, those operating leases. Those are now, all have to be put on the balance sheet, every single one. So you're gonna have to really assess, Peggy, what leases you have, who you have them with, and we're gonna have to put those on the books. So that's gonna be quite an ordeal. It'll be a pretty big one. And then number three, this is a new one for the city. We noted that the electric fund had transferred out over $650,000, and the water sewer transferred out over $100,000 to the general fund to help supplement the costs of the general fund. Since those transfers were done, it brought the unrestricted cash balance to zero in the electric fund. So there is nothing other than restricted cash in the electric fund right now. Our recommendation is you either decrease your transfer in the future, or you evaluate your electric and your sewer rates in order to replenish the funds and make that fund more self-sufficient in the general fund. Doing the transfer is fine, but doing that large of a transfer is not fine, because you won't be able to do it next year. It's not an option. So things are gonna have to be dramatically budgeted in the coming year in order to not go negative in that fund, which you can't. It's not possible to go negative. Okay, so let's look at the financial statements, and you can see what I'm talking about. So we'll jump back over to your bound book. Let's go over the general fund, your governmental funds first, which is General and Park, and that's on page 19. Overall, your revenues for General Fund and Park increased. For the General Fund, it was up over $600,000, and the reason for that is for your MoDOT airport project that was done. Consequently, expenses also increased by that same amount, a little over $750,000 alone was for the airport project. The Park Fund increase of $23,000 over the prior year is all in sales taxes. The expenses in Park went down $20,000, and the bulk of that was in the pool. So that was a good decrease there. Overall, there was, with the revenue coming in and the expenses going out before transfers helped supplement, there were deficits in both of those funds, over $500,000 in General and almost $50,000 in the Park Fund. With the transfers, those helped offset those so that both funds could end up in net income over the prior year. So let's look over on page 20, 23. Let's look at the enterprise funds, which is your water sewer, electric, and sanitation. As far as revenue goes, water sewer actually increased over $150,000. Electric Fund revenue was down $40,000. Sanitation was up just over $12,000. The total expenses between, overall of them, what's good is that they all decreased. Water sewer decreased almost $60,000 from the prior year. Electric Fund was down $300,000, and sanitation was almost $34,000 from the prior year. So good decreases in each of those funds. And then the transfers out, you can see those in the next section down below. And electric fund transferred out the $650,000. So looking at your transfers to versus your actual unrestricted cash from going back to 2015, 2015 is when you had the highest amount of unrestricted cash for the electric fund. It was over $785,000. The next year it dropped down to 513, and then 17 was $195,000, and then in 2018, you're down to zero in that fund. It's just the transfers have been significant every year without being able to retain anything for that fund to keep it self-sufficient. 15, so almost every transfer from, going back from 2015, was over $600,000. So pretty substantial. If you flip to the next page, this is the cash flow statement. I'm not a big fan of the cash flow statement, because it's kind of hard to understand, but I think in this instance, it'll actually make a lot of sense, and you can see what's actually happening. So you've got the three columns across the top, the water sewer, electric, and the sanitation, and you can see the total cash provided by your operating activities. So with the money that you brought in from your customers and what went out to your suppliers and what went out to your employees, you had cash provided. You actually had cash coming in. So, but if you go down to the next section, you can see, okay, with that cash that you had in excess this year, what happened to it, and those were the transfers out. So the significant transfers brought all of those down significantly. And you can see in the electric fund down at the very bottom, there is cash at the end of the year of $372,000, but that is restricted cash. That's not cash that you can use just for discretionary purposes. Water sewer still has discretionary cash of $862,000, and sanitation does have $268,000. Electric fund is the only one that's having severe issues. So as of right now, the electric fund cannot make any transfers out that significant in 2019. It will have to be very minimal. So the expenses are gonna have to be very guarded, I guess you would have to say. Any questions? I hate getting bad news. Kind of took the damper on the evening. It's not necessarily bad news. It's just news that you need to know in order to make better decisions going forward. Okay, so the only other thing that I have left to go over is the other letter that was separate, and this is your governance letter. This is our required communication with the board that we do every year. In this communication, we explain if there were any significant audit matters to discuss, such as difficulties encountered performing the audit. We don't have any difficulties performing this audit. This is a very good city to do an audit with. I know you had new employees, and so there were some hiccups in the audit process, but it seems like those things got squared away and fixed after the audit process. So it looks like water sewer is back on track and doing a good job. I know Lisa is trying her very best, so I appreciate her trying so very hard. She was very upset that she did not want to disappoint me. So I think she's, I think she's gonna do a good job. It's just, she just needed a little bit of a push. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. These are just our adjustments that we do every year. The city budgets on the cash basis, and then we help adjust the city to full accrual for your receivables, your payables, and then of course the pension liability. We did not have any disagreements with management, and we didn't have any other significant matters pertaining to the audit that we had to bring up to you. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Or not, no. But we'll be available to answer questions if I read through this at home and decide I have a question.
Meaning, is there, will we contact you by phone?
Oh, of course. Definitely. Yes, yes. Yeah, if you would like all of this to sink in, and maybe you have more questions, you can, Peggy can forward my information onto you, either email. I will be in office the rest of this week, so I can answer any questions. I think your best bet is probably Peggy has done projections in the future, I mean, in the past for the future. So if you wanted to look to see what would happen with current balances of what's happening, and with current expenses and current revenues, how much could you actually transfer out for your electric fund, and then kind of look and see what you've got to wiggle room to work with, I think that would probably be a good idea. And I know you guys had already started looking at it and discussing it in depth, so I'm not too concerned right now because of the proactive measures that you guys have already started doing. Anything else?
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for all the work you've done.
Well, thank you. I enjoy coming here. I really do. It is a very good audit. You guys are good people, so I enjoy it immensely. Yes, ma'am, I will. Yes, and you should have the electronic copy on surely that you can download. Okay, I can help you with that. Can I call you tomorrow and then move over to the...
Lord willing.
Lord willing that you make it through the evening. All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
May I motion to amend the agenda, please? Just a second. I get all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, that's a hard act to follow. I do have your financial reports at the end of November, and we had already, as she said, we've already been discussing some of the issues that she brought up. We have not made any transfers out of electric since July when we first started this year. So we've been trying to hold our own as long as we can, and I have put a phone call in to the electrical engineer to have him start looking at our rates to see, are we not charging correctly? Is there some adjustments that maybe need to happen there? I don't think any one thing is the answer. I don't think decreasing revenues or decreasing expenses is the only answer. I don't know that increasing revenues is the answer. We're just going to start looking at every aspect of it and probably also consider sharing the transfer responsibility amongst all three of the enterprise funds, not just electric. That's what we've done in the past. We've always just took from electric. But I think as we look forward in the future, we're going to have to start saying, let's just take a percentage from each enterprise fund.
Well, we get used to the other funds were in the red. Always in the red. That's not the case.
Anywhere. So, you know, but I think increased revenues in the general fund would have helped, you know, if we could have gotten some additional revenue, which we did not. So I think that's just something to be looking at down the road of how we maybe not only decrease expenses in there, but maybe bring up some other revenues. Anyway, those are all parts of the process, and as we move forward, I'll keep you updated.
Okay, Suzanne.
Do you want to put out one first?
Yeah. These are a couple of ordinances. The first ordinance, ten forty-two, has to do with the discharge of weapons. And we've had some hunting within the city limits by bow and arrow. And while we have an ordinance prohibiting the discharge of weapons within the city, it specifically listed weapons, and crossbows were not one of them. So we had an incident that arose, and we kind of had to let it go for the time being because we didn't have an ordinance against it. But we feel like that we need to correct that. And an example of what can happen with a crossbow, we had somebody, this is some time back, practicing with his crossbow, and one of them got loose and went through somebody's window, and they were sitting in a chair at the state of the wall above them. So that's one of the reasons we're worried about the discharge of such things within the city. Same way with bullets. You don't always know where a stray one's going to go, so we regulate that. And that's the purpose behind that ordinance. And that ordinance, she'll show you what we've done when we get into it, but we've included crossbows and bows and arrows and projectiles and that sort of thing to prevent that. The second...
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead, then I'll... The second ordinance, we're really, we're struggling with Tressie and all of the changes that are going to take place with municipal court. And I'd say we're struggling because some of the things they're requiring us to do are absolutely against everything we've been taught, where handling of money is concerned. But anyway, we'll go ahead with it. We're going online with the state, and they have very strict rules about what we can do. For example, Tressie, we have to have a separate account, not an account within our account, a separate account. Tressie's name has to be on it. Tressie's the one who will write the checks, and that right there is something that we've never allowed, we've tried to never let happen, but the state's making us do that. And we've wallowed it around for a week and taken it out of both, but there's nothing we can do about it. So we decided we'll go ahead and we'll put her name on it, and we go ahead. If this doesn't work out, if we can't get it to work out, we can always change it. And the change would be, of course, to go into church or court, municipal court. We're not going to want to do that. We don't want to do that. But if we can't get this to work out, so there are lots of things about it we don't know. And it's just real strange to us that we're having to do that. So I told her that, go ahead and get your account set up, put your name on it. And she'll write the dispersment check out of that each month according to what it says. I don't know how they're going to keep track of all that, but we're not going to be able to.
It's totally separate out of our system.
Yeah. It doesn't have anything to do with them, because the state's going to have to monitor. Yeah. I mean, we're not going to be able to... In fact, somehow they've jumped up and said that they don't want anybody but Tressie to know what's going on in that account. You know, that's not going to happen.
And that kind of goes against what our auditor was telling us about.
Well, she'll have a fit when she has to deal with it because she, that's not what we're taught. But it may change, too. You know, it's a new program, and everybody's going, everybody's going online, but it's not just that. Everybody's...
It's part of the Ferguson problem when they done the DOJ investigation up there. That's what really started all this, and it's been coming down the pipeline for several years, so everybody's not switched over to it. So it's here. It's going to have to happen.
Yeah. So we start with it. So they'll write a check for this, and then Tressie has to put some in here, 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 here. Yeah. Now, your ordinance, the ordinance that we're...
Explains where the charges are.
Explains, yeah. What each of the charges are and where they're going to go. And we've changed it a little bit. We latched on to another ordinance that better defined what it is that we're going to be doing, that meets the stuff that Tressie's got in her book, along with the transmission thing.
Yeah. Somehow or another, I believe why it works is that she'll be sending her stuff to the state that belongs to them, and then what is defined as city revenue, she'll write that to me to put into our revenue account for fines.
So that's the way it's supposed to work, but the state's going to, we're not going to have any way to monitor that. It puts Tressie on the spot or whoever's in, municipal clerk, they're going, the state will have to man, the state's going to have to patrol it from their end. I don't know how they'll do that.
They're supposed to.
Well, it is, and they're trying to figure out a way to have a perfect system, and there's always somebody figuring out a way to make it not so perfect. But anyway, that's what the second ordinance is about, has to do with Tressie in this report. We're, that's about as much as I know about you.
Looks like it's mandated by statute.
Yeah, we don't have a choice. We change our ordinance to meet the mandate.
We've got to vote for something, we've got to vote for it.
Well, we've got another thing in here, you know, we're going to sign something whether we want to or not. Yeah. Okay, Suzanne.
Okay, the ordinance number ten forty-two, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri repealing ordinance numbers four, six, four, chapter sixty-two, section nine, seven, seven, and replacing it with a new chapter sixty-two, section one, seven, seven, discharge of weapons.
Okay, ordinance, need that motion to approve?
Yeah. Before we approve that, I would like to discuss that. How does that compare with, do we have an ordinance that includes discharging a paintball gun or a slingshot in the city?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. What we don't, what we didn't was that last part. Unlawful use of a weapon or object that can cause to shoot a projectile by means of air springer by hand. And also, we added crossbow.
So we've just added crossbow today.
Uh-huh, in that last sentence.
Crossbow and bow. And bow.
I don't understand what by hand means. A projectile by hand.
Slingshot.
A spear.
Spear. Yeah, be a slingshot or a...
Well, it mentions slingshot. It already mentions that. So it...
On the whole thing, that's...
Does that mean going to baseball?
No.
Right.
I don't know that. I just didn't realize we had an ordinance that restricted slingshot. I could understand the bow and crossbow.
What it did, Keith, is it named BB gun, it named paintball, air gun, pellet bullet. It named every bit of that, but not bow or crossbow. And so the person who actually had been hunting within the city with a crossbow did not get a ticket for it because of that. So in order to make it a more complete ordinance to cover that, that's why we changed it.
So I guess it gives us a means of taking some action should something bad happen, but I don't guess we've written any tickets to kids shooting slingshots yet every week.
No. I mean, it's a big problem.
We've got a fire. Go off once we're flashing the city that we didn't catch. We do need to think, I don't know if this is the time or talk about it closed and come out or whatever, but we're getting to the point, we're going to have to think about looking at a city, a hunt, a deer hunt with crossbow from a stand like Springfield.
Which you can, you can, the city can okay, or what they call, I guess, an urban hunt within the city limits, and you have to put restrictions on it and where they can hunt.
Well, that doesn't give you the right to go on private land.
Right.
No. Now, we're at that point at the airport, big time, and Mark, Mark has okayed that. I mean, whoever, but he wants to give one tag for a buck, as many does as you want.
Well, we've got that herd, that's the herd that comes into my neighborhood, and then Keith and Burley, they've got their herd, and we've just, we've got several herds.
Right. We've got a big herd at the church.
You know, when it becomes a problem, the city feels like it becomes a problem, that's when we can put the restrictions in there and saying, you give out so many permits for that area and restricted.
You can't, you can't say deer season's here in the city.
They just done this in Springfield.
You got to give your own.
Right. They just done this in Springfield this weekend. They give out so many permits and it went out to everybody because they, some people from Ava even went up there. And you have to hunt from a stand, you have to be in a stand, and you're restricted if you shoot a deer, even when you come out of that restricted area, you have to cover it up. It can't be seen when you come out of that neighborhood. There's a lot of restrictions to it. It's whatever the city wants to do, but it can be done. But this ordinance is trying to cover us from someone doing something they're not, that they weren't supposed to be doing, you know, out parry practicing, and we had an arrow to get away from a guy that went through a window out of a house, you know, but if someone's out here on this property hunting and not shooting from a stand, and that arrow don't go where he expects it to go, and it hits someone's house or somebody, then, you know, we got to have something to cover that. And right now, we don't.
We're, I think we're getting close to having to do that in Ava, set up something, but we'll talk about that at some point. Keith, did you have any?
No.
I mean, any questions? Let's back up and ask for a motion to approve ordinance ten forty-two.
I'm like the motion. The first motion on the...
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First reading. First reading.
Second reading, ordinance ten forty-two, an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, repealing ordinance number four, six, four, chapter sixty-two, section one, seven, seven, and replacing it with a new chapter sixty-two, section one, seven, seven, discharge of weapons.
Motion to approve second reading?
Aye.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
On the title for this second ordinance, ten forty-three, we used the section forty-two and combined it into thirty-three, so down at the bottom, it's just moving those up and putting that one last section in reserve. So that's what that is talking about. Ordinance ten forty-three, an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, repealing ordinance number five, two, eight, chapter thirty-four, section thirty-three, special court cost for police training, and section forty-one, court cost, replacing them with a new chapter thirty-four, section thirty-three, court cost. Chapter thirty-four, section forty-two, failure to appear will be replaced as chapter thirty-four, section forty-one, and chapter thirty-four, section forty-two through sixty-five will be placed in reserve.
That's funny. We need a motion for first reading.
I'll have a motion to approve first reading.
I'll suggest that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I just wanted to read it quicker the next time.
You need to read it quickly?
What a mess.
Ordinance ten forty-three, an ordinance of the city of Ava, Missouri, repealing ordinance number five, two, eight, chapter thirty-four, section thirty-three, special court cost for police training, and section forty-one, court cost, replacing them with a new chapter thirty-four, section thirty-three, court cost. Chapter thirty-four, section forty-two, failure to appear, will be replaced as chapter thirty-four, section forty-one, and chapter thirty-four, section forty-two through sixty-five will be placed in reserve.
Motion to approve second reading. So, okay, need a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We surely comply with everything. The outside of the fire station is done. The, I saw in, I don't remember if it was Friday or yesterday, I saw William Miller there putting guttering up on that, and once the rest of the building is painted, we'll have new guttering put across the back, and it needs it. The guttering in back's been part of the water problem. And I think it looks nice.
It does look nice.
And they're, they've done some work inside, and sometime this winter, Greg will do the painting inside with those guys, and then sometime in the summer, he will finish the outside. And the plan, at least at this point, is to match the rest of the building across with the office. And I've contacted Greg Nacev about the painting, so we kind of got him. He's busy, but we've got him lined up to do that. I prefer to have him do the painting inside, which is about what a little bit of money did on the outside. That way I know when they can pick the covers and do whatever they want to, but that way it, the painting will be done, and you look nice inside. Then they'll do the fourth, and that'll be done this winter. The bricks. We need to decide, this is one company from Herman, Missouri, and this is the brick that comes out of Chicago. This one is, the laser engraving is been done by Katie West, and this is also laser engraving done by the company at Herman. So we need to formally choose which brick, and the only difference between these two bricks are the looks on the side, which are going to be used, or bricks that you put in sand, because they'll, they're used to sand, there's more to them, the edges, if that's the right word. And if we choose that one. But anyway, we need formally decide on which brick. brick, and then we will, I will show you the application that Suzanne and I have put together in order to get your name inscribed on it.
David, the one you have your hand on, where did you say it was from?
Herman, Missouri. Okay, this is Herman? Mm-hmm. Okay, what's the seventh one?
Where's it from?
Well, that's, that's, these both are from Chicago.
Oh, they're both from Chicago.
The only difference in these two, she told me, was she just showed what it looked like with lead on it, this is what you'd use if you're putting in concrete, this is what you're gonna put it in sand, and ours is gonna be in sand, at least at this point. So...
Price comparison, they're all comparable.
Yes, engraving, Katie's is gonna be at twenty-five, this one is at twenty-eight, so they're comparable. I don't know what the turnaround time was on this brick, but I talked to Katie, each, each one of these will hold three lines, even though she's just done two, she can do three lines, and we're looking at about fourteen spaces for information. Turnaround time, she said about, do about twenty in a day. Twenty-five, which is pretty good turnaround, and the plan is that we approve the brick, which one we want to do, and we, we approve what we're gonna charge, and then also approve form, and the, the thinking is that whoever comes and says that granddad was a veteran in World War One will take their word for it. We're not gonna be in the business of going out and trying to decide who's a veteran and who's not, that's too complicated, I don't have discharge papers for my granddad, I don't, I may not know when he died, may not know his birthdate, so there, you have to have social security number and a birthdate, at least, to determine if someone's a veteran, or the discharge paper, and I just found my dad's World War Two papers and a bunch of stuff just by accident, so I, I think that most people are gonna be truthful about it, they'll come in, there's gonna be a charge for it, and that puts full responsibility on us, as the city, to see that it gets done, and takes the, any confusion that might exist, veterans associations involved in it also, I don't think they'll mind not being involved.
This would be a lot simpler.
Yeah, I think so, too, so that's, that, that's the thinking, so this form, this form had at the bottom verified such and such, and we took it off, and the form originally came West Plains, the mayor of West Plains sent us a copy, and Suzanne has kind of redone it, but this is it, with this off the bottom, we've changed the price, so they'll come into Suzanne, we'll mark it in the blocks, and black ink does show up, and these, we tried that, and we, exactly who that person wants, the person who's doing it will sign address and phone number, and we'll make a copy, and it will go with the person who's done this, we will send an email to if, whoever's gonna do the break, and we'll keep the original, which will go in a three-ring binder in alphabetical order, so that by calling, I want like my granddad's got a brick, I don't know, and that's about as simple as I think we can make it.
Yeah.
And I think it'll work, we, we talked a lot about it, we've changed our minds, and we've kicked it around.
I think we're gonna get a lot of interest to them.
Well, I think we'll have five hundred to a thousand requests for bricks before we ever start.
I think you're probably right.
Yep, I really do, in this case, with Katie, and I talked to her yesterday, she's gonna buy the brick and keep it for stopping, so we won't have to do that.
Neither one.
Yeah, either one, that will be, if we, if we go with this brick, it'll be this one, because of the lugs on it.
Because of the...
For sand.
Later branding is the same on both.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Now, there may be a little difference in the color of the brick, they're both clay, they're clay, and I had, I asked Katie, she didn't know, so we called the guy in Chicago yesterday, and he said, oh yeah, he said, I can send you, he said, it's a compli- complicate, complicated formula, I said, I don't, I don't wanna know what's in it, I said, you, clay's good enough for me, so. We can, we can do however you want to, this is my choice, but we need to see where we are on this.
Drum, the others. Yeah, we all like this one, but...
Yeah, we all, I don't know what that's supposed to mean.
And that was even David earlier.
Okay.
But they're about the same.
Yeah, well, I, I think she intended for them to be the same, the only difference was the lugs, yeah, I don't think, I don't think she intended for it to be...
Actually, once you get that place, I mean, you're just looking at face.
Well, and, and you know, all of these clay bricks are probably not all gonna be exactly the same.
See, that was just kind of... See, the, the texture, and I'm gonna say they're gonna all be different.
They probably will be, yeah.
And that's probably, it's just a smoother texture.
It's just what we've...
Well, I'd make a motion that we go with Katie's...
I will, I will second Keith's motion, that we go with this, this brick right here.
Okay. Do we have?
And...
All in favor? Yeah, I, I guess, yeah.
I'm a favorite.
He'll do that. Now...
It's the one I wanted.
Burley kind of had me going...
Mr. President, look at your phone.
Now, the suggested price that we're gonna charge will be fifty dollars, which I think's pretty reasonable for that, that will help pay for the sign, we'll put it there, sign is really not a nice enough word for what's there, that's almost a monument. But also will help fund expenses on down the line, including the flags which will go back behind, those alone are gonna be in the twenty thousand dollar range.
Yeah.
That's very expensive. So, that'll help fund that, and if, once that walkway's full, if we wanna change, and we can, we can designate a walkway going some other direction, you know, and we can change how we wanna do that when the time comes, or make it the same.
We could, we could possibly put one on the other side, and kind of make it similar. And, and I think there's a possibility that we may have to do that.
Yes, we may, because I think we'll fill it up, may take us a year, but I, but I think, I think, I think we're gonna have lots of requests for it, so my, my suggestion is that we charge fifty, and that we use this form, and I need a, I need a motion, of course, the price is on here, so if we have a motion to...
Yeah, I suggest that. Make a motion, James, and Katie?
All in favor? Okay. I think that takes care of the brick. Good, now, what we, what we plan on doing, and the reason I'm gonna do all that tonight, is so that we can announce, beginning first of January, after New Year's, it would be set up and ready for people to come, and they can wait in Peggy's office while they're waiting. They'll be, they won't just be coming one at a time, and we'll do, I don't see how we're gonna be able to do anything like this, except in person, not on the phone.
I don't either, I don't know.
I don't wanna take it on the phone, because of my hearing, so...
Well, that's too easy, we don't have any way to verify what we're doing, so me, person. The electric shed, we're running the request for bids in the paper this, this week, or last, this week, first week, and the bids will, might be open January seventeenth.
I didn't bring my...
It's January seventeenth, I believe, that those bids will be open, so there's lots of time in here for guys to look at it, we've had two or three people already interested in it, and I've called a person or two, and we're doing it, and I, I even went so far that I called both under yards, let them know, you know, that they make, I don't know what part they play in it, but anyway, so that's where we are with that. Today, and I didn't go over and look at it, I'll do it tomorrow, Carl has ripped in the entrance to that piece of ground where that fire hydrant was, by the corner of the electric shed, so that if you come in there, off the highway, at Ava Ready Mix, headed toward the electric shed, you can just rear a little to the left, and there's a thirty-foot driveway there where you're gonna be able to go in, and we'll wait a little bit to determine exactly what we're gonna do with the exit that comes out of there, it's got a whistle, and, and it's got to be dug out in a bigger whistle, and wider, that kind of stuff, but anyway, the first driveway's been done. You see your airport letter?
Mm-hmm.
Ah, that was a real...
Very nice.
Wasn't that nice? That was a real surprise, then looked down, so he, was he known highly, he was really pleased with the service that Bill Nelson and, who's the other one, Suzanne, other mechanic?
Who did you like?
Bill Nelson.
And Ron Welton.
Yeah, Ron Welton, are the two guys that helped him, and of course, I'm sure David and Mary Kay were part of that, but, well, he was really surprised to get that kind of treatment in a little bit of airport, and the two guys that had to repair the airplane, so I replied to it, and gave copies of both letters to David and Mary Kay, and to both Bill and Ron Welton, so they, they'd know, but that, that was a really nice, unexpected compliment. The next thing on there is the nine eleven letter, and it's pretty self-explanatory, and our time for doing anything about it has passed, but I'm not sure we... The question I had was, will that money be set aside, Douglas County money set aside for the time when we might have nine one one, the answer's no, it'll go into the pot and be used across the state. Well, if we don't have nine one one, we'll have to vote it, only way we're gonna have it, and I can tell you, ahead of time, it'll take a one-cent sales tax to do it. One-cent sales tax will raise about nine hundred thousand, which is what, which is what Wright County raised with three eight cents sales tax to fund there, so to fund that same amount of money, but if the time ever comes we do that, it'll be out there sitting by itself, it'll be standing alone, have its, should have its onboard, and it'll have fifteen to twenty people, full-time and part-time, and wages will be a little bit higher than what you might normally say, twenty-four hours a day, and all things operating the way they should, it should do the dispatching for both the sheriff's office and the city police, if it's, if it's...
If that's a, that's a tax, that'll have to be a county-wide tax, won't it?
Yes.
It won't be a municipal tax, it'll be a county-wide.
It'll be a county-wide tax, yeah, that's the only way we're gonna have nine one one, the only way, unless the state just blocks the money down at our lap, that's not gonna happen, and probably not gonna have it, the same state is just paying ten thousand in the salary. We are, we hence, the Chamber of Commerce and a committee or two wanting us to put directional signs for things, for example, as you come into... As you come into the city, you come over the top of that hill, you'll see a sign that says industrial park, and now, the state has to be involved in the placement of it, but I, well, I've talked to Randall Union quite a little bit, anything that we decide to do with signs has to go to Michael Wake over at Willis Springs, Michael Wake sends it to Jefferson City, Jefferson City sends it back, and then we get ahold of Randall Union locally, and he says, you can put a sign here, but we can't here, but, you know, it's all very closely, tightly regulated, so you come over the top of the hill, and his initial suggestion was it'd be before you get to the industrial park sign, since there's so many signs coming into that intersection, so the place where these signs will be has not been set, but for example, that sign that sign would say, I'm not even... I may be something on my head, I'm tired of looking at it, but just to give you an example. This sign would look something like this, if you can see it, see the logo at the top? That's the same logo that's on the welcome to Ava sign at the intersection, and it would be directional, so coming in from, from the north, say, coming in from South Five, you'd come up to stop signs, say, Business District to the right, City Offices to the right, County Offices to the right, coming in from Seventy-S sixth, that same place, it would say downtown district straight ahead, county offices straight ahead, city offices straight ahead, if you came in from the north, it would say downtown district to the left, city offices, county, so, and then we'd have one on fourteen, same way, that all meets straight ahead, when you go, those signs would take you by the health department, but actually, if you went down and made it, it would take you by the police department, what about school, you turn right on Business Five, you go right to the school, right to the square, so we'd need another sign about where the Pizza Hut is, and that would, that would say, I think Keith got that one, the Pizza Hut would say, and, and there's a certain order for this, and Michael emailed back, any, any left-hand turn or straight-ahead arrow has to be listed first, left-hand turn first, then your straight arrows, have to be in that order, on this side, right-hand arrows on that side, so these are, these are not actually the way the arrows would be, but it would, the cemetery would say to the left, downtown district to the right, and Arlen Schools to the right, and that would take you to the square. So let's say you came in from the other way, and you came in all the way to the square, and you, you had to go around the square, you should, to the right, and we're wanting to put a sign just about on that corner of what Swaddish's office is, and it would have a community center straight ahead, museum to the right, and art building to the right, those are called wayfaring signs, and the state will approve them, we can have twenty-four by, twenty-four by thirty-six, or thirty-six to forty-eight, and we're, we're thinking the larger signs out on the highway, and for the smaller sign of a Pizza Hut, and on the square, twenty-four to thirty-six farm, because you're going slower, and I called today to see if this sign company could replicate that at the top of the sign, and we're waiting to see about that, so we, the thought was to do that first, and then I'll, I'll redo these, and we'll come back to the council, and see how we feel about it, about the signs, then we would, and the cost, now, these signs are not as expensive as you think, the signs are about a hundred and sixty dollars each, we're looking at six signs, but, and we'll talk about the cost, of course, the, the logo's gonna cost something, I mean, they have had to put on there if they can replicate it, then, once we get all this, I've got my, two, I got a map showing where all these signs are gonna be, and then it's got to go to Michael Wake, and Michael wants all of them at the same time, he doesn't want four of them now, two of them later, because of the paperwork. Moved out, and Michael wants all of them at the same time, he didn't want four of them now and two of them later, because of the paperwork. So we're not, we're not done with this, but I wanted to show you what it is we're looking at, and that's what they're called, wayfaring. You see them in Springfield?
Sure, I certainly see them.
And...
Those have them in Springfield.
Yeah.
Ava, I'd ask you a specific question.
They don't let us do Bass Pro signs. But they also will determine exactly where these signs are going to be. And that will, that will, that will come back and that'll be around with you and Josh. And I've talked to him, and he's, he's going to be real easy to work with on these kind of signs. He's, he's a nice kid. If he doesn't mind me calling him a kid. Court dockets, we need to approve the court docket of eleven sixteen eighteen, need a motion to approve, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the court docket.
Second, so no, all in favor?
Aye.
That was part of amending the agenda, because I didn't get the court docket until you told me.
I had DNR on there, but we're going to pull it into closed. Talk to, it kind of, it falls under litigation, so we're going to do that, and, uh, and, and also, uh, we're going to talk about the building across the, from Harold's office, but we'll know tomorrow. Motion, those, you still make the motion? Yes, sir.
Second to motion.